The meeting will come to order. First thing is the approval of minutes. I don't believe we approve the December ninth or the December thirtieth minutes. Am I correct, Peg? I'm pretty sure that's the case.
I think that's true. Yeah, you should have all of them, though.
Then I'll move to approve both the December ninth and December thirtieth minutes.
So move?
Uh, he.
Uh, he'll move, I'll second.
Okay.
You second.
I'll second it.
Uh, okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Councilor Conniff?
Aye.
Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. Mayor is not communicating anything tonight other than what's on the agenda. The only new business is the $10,000 for the licensing clerk that stipend. I'm not prepared to move on that quickly. I want some research done. I've done a little bit of research through Val in that. I believe we only have two clerks that are permanently, that are paid outside of their regular job description. One of them would be the licensing clerk. Jamie gets paid through the CPA, but it's part of her job. It's not for the CPA, it's part of her job. So I want to do a little more research to find out if there's any other clerks, but I don't believe there are. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask the finance committee, how you feel about, but I'd like some job descriptions, put together some duties and responsibilities for both the clerk of the council and the licensing clerk. So we can see what it's all about. It also puts on record what these clerks are doing for the stipends they're getting. Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm gonna go to the Emily to see if she has anything. If not, I'm gonna ask both Barbara and maybe Lindsay to put together what they think those job descriptions should be. And before we vote on it, we're gonna look at those. And I'm gonna ask Omar, can you do a little research for us into other cities and towns? Like, what do they pay their clerk to the council?
Yes, I can do that.
I'm sorry, we're hanging up the phone. And what do they pay any other clerks in town? Like we did for the stipends for the boards and committees. I'd like to find out a little bit. Um, I, I think we should have all this information before we make a final decision on this. Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, I, um, Mr. Chairman, could we also look at the stipends across the city, not just the two clerks?
Um. Well, the stipend, the only other stipends are the stipends for the boards and committees. If I, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that's what I want to make sure that we don't have to go, maybe I'm wrong. So we can just re.
Val, Val researched it for me and I'll ask you, Val, to do a little more digging, but I don't think there's any other stipends out there. I thought maybe Jamie or Jeff got a stipend for the planning board, but I don't believe so. So we're gonna look into them.
Okay. There will be, not to interrupt, a tree warden will have one.
Is that a stipend or part of a job?
It's gonna be a stipend.
Stipend.
Okay, thank you. That's important.
I'm hoping, I'm pretty sure I have a candidate to get that filled right now. We're working through the.
And, oh, God, I'm forgetting his name. He retires and I forget his name.
George.
George did that on the side. He was the park foreman for the maintenance foreman and he did that on the Sunday. So that's the kind of thing we have to find out. Um, so Peg, we're gonna, or Val, we're gonna need to know what that is. For tree wardens fees. But I'll put that together in a, in a little email to everybody. Anybody can think of anything that anybody's getting anywhere extra. Jen, do you hear me on that? We're gonna look into that. We want to do some research. We want to get some job descriptions done for all of these positions. So I'll probably want that for the tree warden, Greg. Just to compare duties for stipends, so it's out there. You may already have it, I just don't know. Okay? Anything else, Peg?
Yeah, Val had mentioned the other day that the, the request for the supplemental appropriation um, had a couple of discrepancies in it. And I, I think one of them was the sentence, the money's coming from licensing revenue will be budgeted out from licensing revenue for FY22. Is that? Val, is that some, is that true? Should that remain in this request? Should that get struck, stricken? Um.
I think what she told me was they, they go to the general fund. So I don't think that sentence should be there, correct, Val? The, the monies aren't budgeted.
You're unmute. Now, you're unmute. Val, you're unmute.
You're muted, Val.
Now, you're muted.
I'm fooling with these buttons back and forth.
Probably a good story, but we missed it.
The picture goes out, the voice comes.
I don't know how to read lips. It was one of those things, a skill I wanted to learn, but anyway.
License, licensing is a local receipt. And by mass general law, that goes into the pot that supports the budget, the general fund.
General fund.
So the money's not coming from licensing. I think what she is saying is because she takes money in from licensing, she's bringing money in and so it's supported by that. But that sentence is not true.
Okay.
It is coming from free cash and next year it will be, have to be in the budget.
All right, well, we'll look at that. Okay? Uh, so that like, that, that line is a descriptive line. I don't think it affects the actual transfer. The main thing is it covers a stipend. So if everybody's okay with that, that little bit of research, maybe by the next meeting we'll have something. You okay with that, Peg? Anything else from you guys on that? All right, well, Peg, feel better.
Thank you. Omar, could I ask you to take the minutes for the rest of this meeting? Thank you. Bye, guys.
Thank you, Omar.
Bye, Peg.
All right, so we have a bunch of supplemental appropriations. The first is an easy one. Mayor, we're back. You can come back in if you want. The $1 million from Free Cash to stabilization accounts. I would just like to ask, after we put 600,000 in general, 300 in capital, I know the tax rate is only 100 anyway. But in those two stabilization accounts, what would be the total, Val? After we move this money?
Okay, the, the general stabilization will have, uh, 3,425,594 dollars and 84 cents after the 600,000 goes in.
That's a good figure. And the capital?
Yeah, and it's a good idea because of the COVID. Um, the capital stabilization will have 1,888,825 dollars and 6 cents.
Okay, we did use a little bit of that recently, but that's still a good figure. Uh, that's all I wanted to know. I always like saving money and it gives us a chance to save money over the budget year. You don't have to worry about it. This free cash has to be recertified. We can't just use it again. So this is always good. I always love stabilization accounts. And it also tells our bonding agencies how stable we are. Omar, do you have any questions on these two, these three?
No, I do not. I think it makes sense.
You want to say anything, Mayor? You like saving money, I assume.
Uh, I like saving money, too. We need to save as much as we can right now, all of our pennies. All of our pennies that we can get into the bank, we need to.
Okay. Uh, especially since we have budget uncertainty from the state. We don't know what's gonna happen, so. I don't have anything further on this. Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the $1 million transfer from Free Cash, 600,000 in general stabilization, 300,000 to capital stabilization, and 100,000 to tax rate stabilization.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
And then Councilor Rich says aye. Okay? Greg, you're up. Now, I want to say that I made a typo in the minutes, I mean, in the agenda. It's not 20,000 for the fire department floor. It's 25,000.
Yep.
So what I'm curious about, it obviously needs to be repaired. It sounds like because it's under you, Greg, that it's gonna be an in-house repair? Is that why it's under you, Chris, or is somebody else gonna do it?
Well, we'll have a contractor do it. We have to cut the section of the floor out that the drain system's currently mounted in, then repour the concrete, because the concrete has fallen so bad from the salt getting, getting into it between the drain grates and the concrete. So all that section there needs to be replaced. And then we'll install a new, a whole new drain grate system.
And this is just cooperation between departments? I mean, Chris, you could have just asked for this money and hired your own contractor, right? I'm just curious why.
Building ops, building ops falls under DPW, so repairs to the building are.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, good. I didn't know. Good. And, and Chris, I assume you like the fact that this is getting fixed?
Yeah, um, in my short tenure, Greg and I had a chance to go look at it directly. And I believe when Peg was there and did a ride along, she saw it as well. And I know Omar's familiar with it also. In regards to, the concern really is just when all the personnel walk in front of those vehicles, whether it's tripping over that or twisting an ankle. And then obviously, right now, it's not a concern with the buildings being shut down to the public. But as those buildings in the future become open to the public, um, the concern obviously, again, is the same in terms of slips, falls, and sprains and things of that nature.
Well, I fix it right away, because I'm not a fan of workman's comp either.
I, I agree.
All right, well, Omar, you've seen it. I guess it's pretty bad, huh?
Yes, it is bad. Yes, I'm, I'm happy that we are fixing it. Uh, I think it's the time to do it and we have the money to do it now. So I, I think it's a good thing to do.
Okay. All right, so it comes under DPW as their responsibility to get anything like this done? All right, anything else you, most of you want to say on this? I, it's an obvious, we have to fix this. You know, okay, I'll move that we, we approve or send to the full council approval of a supplemental appropriation of 25,000 from Free Cash to repair the fire department floor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. The next thing is $50,000 for water meters. We always do this every year. This is to replace. Do we still have any older water meters, Greg?
Yeah, we do.
Before they were digital or radio operated? We still have some of those?
We do a few hundred. We're, we're really closing in on it. Um, part of the problem now is the, the meters that are left out there that still, that haven't been replaced are you can't, the, the water service to the meter itself is so old that you can't really touch the valve in front of the meter because the homeowner hasn't upgraded their side of the service yet. So it's a, it's a challenge that's, that we face, you know, quite often. But, uh, some of the, some of the older meters, we're able to put radios on, but where we are, I mean, we really are closing in on it. I think we're down to.
Is this for all older meters? There's no of the radio meters that are, that are old that we started to repair being replaced?
Well, some, I mean, even a 20, you know, the battery life in a, in a meter, in a meter radio, in a meter radio is about 20 years. So we're starting to see some that were put in in early 2000s that were radio, the radio section of it needing to be replaced.
But that's not the whole meter, that's just the section.
Yeah, just, it basically half the cost of a complete meter is about a little over $100 for just the.
Mostly older meters.
Yeah.
Okay, we do this every year. I'm glad we're doing it. I hope, do you think you'll catch up this year and get them all in, or?
Well, we'll, we'll get as many as we can. We've been really avoiding going into homes just because, because of COVID. But I'm hoping that will.
Well, hopefully, maybe by the fall, you'll be able to do that.
Exactly, and we'll be getting caught up. We're only going to do the emergency ones at this point where they're, you know, apps, you know, leaking and need to be replaced, so.
Okay.
So with these $50,000, how many meters we gonna get or around how many?
They're about $250 apiece. So, or $200, $250, so, you know, doing that math, I'll quick, um, it kinda, it's hard to say, really. We'll, we'll do as many 5/8 sized.
200, obviously, so, but you, some of them might cost more or some.
Exactly, that's what I was getting at. Some of them are gonna be, are more money. Like, you get a bigger building, say, um, I don't, the first one comes to mind, the East Hampton, the new East Hampton Savings Bank on, on the corner of, uh, North Hampton Street and, uh, uh, O'Neill. That, that, there's a two-inch meter in that building. A two-inch meter is over $2,000. The, the, yeah, once you get up into a larger meter size, the price really.
We have to replace that one?
Um, we actually, we did have to replace it, yeah. It, uh, it broke at a mechanical failure inside of it. That was a couple of years ago, but that was the first one that popped into mind, but.
Okay.
But it does happen. I mean, you have, we have thousands of them out there and, and they break, you know. Some, there, there's a pretty decent warranty on the Neptune water meters, but it mechanical, if, say, a rock gets into it or something, that's not a, it can break, it can break a larger meter and it, uh, it's not covered with warranty.
And as I recall, replacing these meters also gives us a good sense if we're having an issue with a leak.
Yeah.
Older meters, which the homeowner may not know and consequently we're losing water.
Yeah, the new meters are significantly more accurate. They really, they pick up every drop of water. And if we have, one real nice thing, bottoms, we have to get a complaint of a high water bill. We can actually log into the, the radio of the new meter and see, you know, hourly usage of when, when, when the, when it went up and how long it stayed up and what was going on, so.
Okay. All right, Omar, any more questions?
No.
Mayor, anything you want to add? No? Okay. I assume Jen and Val, you're okay with this. This is enterprise retained earnings. Um, I'll ask at the end for those balances, uh, because I want to go through all these, Val, and then I'll ask you for the balances on Free Cash and Enterprise, okay? So I'll make a motion to send to the full council the supplemental appropriation of 50,000 from enterprise retained earnings into the FY21 water meter replacement account.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. Next item is, uh, 10,000 to purchase an order control tank. This is a rental that we pay $125 a month for. And you would like to get a new one.
Well, we don't want to, I don't want to pay a rental fee. We don't want to pay a rental fee for one anymore. I think we can buy one. They're made out of, uh, plastic style material and it'll last the city years and years and pay for itself in time, so.
I'm doing some math, 1,500. 10,000 divided by 1,500. Six and a half years, so how, how long is the life on this guy?
Oh, I would say at least 20 years.
So six years, six and a half years to pay it off, given $125 a month. That's good. I like it better. I don't suppose the rental fee came with a, a maintenance contract, did it?
No.
So if it went down, you have to fix that, too.
Yeah.
Huh, gee, well, I'm glad we're buying it. Omar, do you have any question? Now, given that this was a, it's, it's sort of capital, but it really is a no-brainer, Mayor. Do you need to say anything about that? I mean, I think it's obviously that we need to do it. It's kind, it's a new thing, but it's replacing a rental. To me, that's a, that's a.
And, yeah, and to add that, uh, the mayor last time said, uh, if it is less than $25,000, she will be open to, uh.
Thank you, that's, yes, thank you.
We can hear you, Nicole.
Thank you, Councilor Gomez. I'm sorry, I got distracted for a moment.
Yes, thank you. All right, so, uh, anything else from anybody? Then I'll make a motion for, to move to the full council supplemental appropriation of $10,000 from enterprise retained earnings to the FY21 order control tank account of $10,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says, um, the next item is 93,021 dollars and 74 cents. Obsolete and replacement parts no longer available for these two pumps. Uh, this is an obvious no-brainer, too. Can I ask, is this one of the things on the Tiger Bond report?
Yes.
That's good. Anytime we can tell everybody that we're trying to do those things, I think it's important.
Yeah, it's, it's one of many of the upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant, but.
But it was targeted by that report.
Yes. And replacing these significantly increases the reliability of the plant there. I mean, these are original, I, I think they're early 1970s. They're about 50, a little over 50 years old, so.
And what's the life of the new pumps? That long, 50 years?
Well, I would prob, I could confidently tell you 20 to 30.
Yes, but the only reason we have 50 years is because we constantly replace the parts. We probably rebuilt the entire pumps.
Yeah.
At least once, maybe twice over that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're running into that problem of not being able to get replacement parts for a lot of things at the wastewater treatment plant at this point, because they're just.
They're old.
It's obsolete, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm very happy we're doing this. Any questions, Councilor Gomez?
I do not.
Any comments from the mayor or anybody? Fire chief, have any comments? Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve 93,021 dollars and 74 cents to be taken from enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to the FY21 return and wastewater, waste pump replacement account.
Second.
Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. Next one is $30,000 to replace, um, FY yard roll-off containers. I noticed here in, one of my questions was, the additional dumpster will also be used for disposal of catch basin and sewer cleaning debris.
Yep.
That cannot be discharged in the treatment plant. How do we do it, deal with that now?
Well, we, we stockpile it till it dries out. Um, and we need to do, we need to dispose of it in a better way than, than we are at this point, so.
Once it dries out, do you have, then you move it someplace?
Well, it depends. We sort the litter out of it. Uh, a lot of the catch basin cleanings, we end up with uh, bags from dog waste and just all, all types of litter. But it really should all just get landfilled in one. It's not the best practice, the way we're doing it now. Getting, having these two dumpsters. One of them will be used constantly for the grit disposal at the wastewater treatment plant. We currently pay a rental fee of $350 a month. If that dumpster doesn't go get emptied, if it, it gets emptied every couple of months. But if the month set, they don't remove it from the headworks building, we pay a $350 fee for the, for a waste management dumpster to sit on our property. So having our own will eliminate that fee.
And that's a, that's a seven-year payback, $4,200 a year. How much the life of these containers? It's a lot more than seven years, I hope.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. 20 to 30 years, I would say. You know, we'll be, they're small, we'll be able to clean them, keep the salt off of them. That's what'll really prolong their life.
So bad practice of, uh, for the disposal of catch basin and sewer cleaning debris. Councilor Gomez, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. I think it makes sense buying this instead of renting and.
I like it, I like it, especially if it's a payback well within the life of the, uh, whatever we're buying, so.
Yep, I agree.
Uh, anything from anybody else? Mayor, anything? Out, okay.
I think one other thing, we, we need to do much, we need to do more catch basin cleaning than we're doing uh, with our NFTs, with our MS4 permit. So if we can have these to do a better job of that, it's, it's gonna help us out.
It will do a better job of it?
Absolutely, yeah. As we do more cleaning, we're gonna have more debris to get rid of, so.
Catch up on cleaning. Uh, because you're gonna be able to dump them yourselves whenever you need to go to the, get rid of them. You don't hire someone to come in and take them, right?
Uh, we will. They will get, they won't get hauled. We don't have a, a roll-off truck to take them. They will get hauled by a contractor.
Okay.
Won't have to pay any.
I mean, like USA or?
Yeah, 24/7, someone like that, yeah.
Okay. But that's a fee we pay now anyway.
Yes.
Good. All right. I don't have any more questions, so I'll make a motion to move the supplemental appropriation of $30,000 from enterprise retained earnings to the 20-yard roll-off container account of $30,000.
Second.
Do you have any further discussion?
No.
Okay, then, uh, Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. Last one is to replace the doors on the Daily Field Pump Station in Wastewater Treatment Plant. Is this another, uh, Tiger Bond targeted item, Greg?
Yeah, the condition of those buildings is mentioned in that IWRMP. And part of the problem here is they're exposed to, they, they deal, the, the steel on the door frames deals with a lot of exposure to the, uh, the corrosive conditions of the raw sewage in those buildings. And it's, it's just eaten away the doors. They really just need to be replaced.
Sounds good to me. Sounds like it's a must-do.
Yeah, it's just chipping away at some of the bigger, you know, some of the things that need to get done on the wastewater side, so.
Well, I, I, I assume that all of these items you're bringing up that are wastewater treatment plant are priority items.
Yes.
So you'll come to us for other ones when, when and if we ever have more money to deal with this.
Yeah, the, the bigger ticket items, you know, we need, we're, you know, we'll be looking at the other ways of funding it where we're not, you know, maybe we can get SRF funds or, you know, maybe some legislation comes out of Washington after this pandemic that can provide some money for infrastructure. We'll be looking at stuff like that.
That would be great.
Some of the bigger things, so.
Any way we can keep it off of the ratepayers would be, would be. Uh, any questions, Omar?
I do not. Thank you.
Mayor, anything? No? Okay.
All set.
Um, I'm gonna move that we approve the supplemental appropriation of $20,000 to be taken from enterprise retained earnings. $20,000 to be transferred to FY20 door replacements of the Daily Field and Headworks Building.
Second.
Further discussion? Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Rich says aye. Now, Val, you're up. What's the, after enterprise retained earnings and Free Cash spending to date, what do we have for balance? That's assuming all of these are approved by council, which I'm assuming they will be.
Right. I'll start with a good one. Uh, retained earnings will be 1,588,649 dollars and 26 cents.
Okay.
And free cash will be 126,050 dollars and 97 cents.
You please repeat that.
126,000?
126, comma, 015, period, 97.
So we've pretty much spent most of it?
Yeah.
Especially with that $1 million transfer. Okay.
But it, but we have it in savings, so.
That's the place we'll go, Mayor, if we have an emergency. Okay? Um, I see someone from the licensing board is on the call. We've already discussed that. I don't know who that is. Is that Lindsay? I don't know if you want to say anything, licensing board, but we're about to adjourn.
Hi, yeah, it's me, Lindsay. Sorry, I was conveniently hosting a licensing meeting, so I wasn't able to.
Lindsay, so you know, we're gonna do some research on this. And one of the research items, since you're here, I'll tell you is, we want to try and get together a job description, duties and responsibilities for this clerk position. And we're gonna use that and compare it to other uh, clerks in, in, in our government in East Hampton, as well as in other communities. So you can start putting together something that tells us what you do for this stipend, okay?
Sure.
But it's not just targeting you. It, it gives us impetus to find out what everybody's doing.
Absolutely understandable. And I actually do have an Excel spreadsheet of other Massachusetts towns and cities that have licensing positions. Um, most of them.
You're so hard, Omar.
There you go. Thank you, Lindsay. Now I don't have to do anything.
Omar, I can definitely get that over to you. Most of them are tied into job performance roles um, that are associated with, um, town administrators or chief of staff positions. So it's a little different, so their pay is a little higher opposed to doing stipends. Um, but I'll get you that spreadsheet so you can look that over and, and see those numbers for yourself. Um, and then I also have a job description that outlines everything I do throughout the year and also, um, some of my accomplishments for the, for this current year.
Perfect. All right, the job description and the duties and responsibilities make that like a formal thing. And the accomplishment is a separate document. Now, is it possible, I know, for instance, I use Jamie Webb as an example. She's paid to cover the CPA, but she's paid so many hours out of her job. So it's not a separate stipend. This would be a separate stipend like the, like Barbara's stipend is separate for the clerk in the council.
Correct.
Those things you've researched, is there a way to find out what the actual pay is for those clerks that you're looking at?
I don't know. I could certainly put out, um, an ask to my listserv of municipal clerks and, um, see what, see what responses I can get back.
Well, that'd be good. And if there's some that actually do have stipends versus part of their jobs, there's two different ways of looking at it, then that would be good. Okay?
Okay.
That's what we, we are doing. We're not gonna rush this until we get a lot of information, okay? That's what we, we are doing. We're not gonna rush this until we get a lot of information, okay?
Sure. I'll get that over to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Omar, I think we're done. Does anybody have anything else? Thank you. And Jen, I'm sorry, we didn't have much for you tonight, but you can go back to dinner. It's only five-thirty.
Do you wanna, you, do you wanna schedule the next meeting now or?
The next meeting, yes. We're gonna have the budget, which Barbara's sending us, so the next meeting will be uh, let me, I'm gonna go get into my calendar. Give me a second. February tenth. Okay?
Okay. Same time, five P M.
February tenth, everybody who's, I don't know. Uh, that's a budget thing, as far as I know, and we'll deal with the licensing board thing.
Okay. And it's gonna be at five P M., right?
Yep, five P M.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, Councilor Gomez?
Aye.
Councilor Riss says aye. Thank you all. Have a good evening. It was only a half hour. Thank you, Chris. We always like seeing your beautiful face.